I was going to say, right.
At the Des Moines City Council meeting for November 4th, prior to the start of the meeting, we're going to have a quick message from our own council member, Mr. Chris Coleman. Mr. Coleman, would you like to have a stand-up?
Sure, thank you.
All right, we'd ask everybody to stand up if they would for this message.
Let's take a moment to reflect and pray for the wonderful community that we have. Let's especially thank God for the employees of the city. Those public servants that do the work day in and day out, night in and night out, holiday and weekday, thank you for your service. Thank them for their strong commitment to make this the best community that it can be. We thank them for going above and beyond for all that this community means to so many people. Thank you, God, for public servants, for people who are willing to put others before themselves, ask for your blessing on them for safety and happiness and for their health. Thank you.
All right, let's call this meeting to order, and I'll ask clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mantelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a form.
All right, thank you. Second item is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. There are a couple of quick items. Under the consent, 4C, 4Q were both withdrawn, their inspections are incomplete. Item 16 is corrected, shows Josh Mantelbaum is the primary member and myself is the alternate member to DART. 25 is a corrected, commencing December 31st of 2019. 46B is corrected, is accepting the finance director's decision on appeal on a bid award to True Green, Nick May, general manager. And the regular agenda item, 52 to 71, 54E was added, its final consideration of ordinance above. Waiver was requested by council member Coleman and requires six votes. There is an extra item this evening, it's a discussion regarding Bloomberg Philanthropies' Asphalt Art Initiative Grants, and the sponsors are council members Mantelbaum and Gatto. With those amendments, unless anybody has anything else, I'd ask to have a motion to approve.
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight, those are items 3 through 51. Item 4A and 4B, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Item 4O and 4P, council member Coleman votes no. Item 5, county votes no. Item 7, Coleman wishes to speak. 37, Coleman wishes to speak. 39, Bozen and Gatto wish to speak. 45, Coleman wishes to speak. 46B, council member Gatto wishes to speak. And 46D, 46E and 46F, Coleman votes no. Item 23, council member Mantelbaum wishes to speak. And item 3CI, Mantelbaum has declared a conflict. Okay, that's 36I?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Looked like 3CI.
I'll move item 3 with those changes.
All right, and Ms. Coleman, we are asking for some clarification on item 7, which you have asked for. There are four sub-items underneath that. Did you wish to speak to all those?
No. Can we? I'll just pull off 7A.
Okay. So 7A. All right, with that, the balance has been moved?
7, yes.
All right, the item passes. Let's go to 4A, 4D. These are license and permits. A is the damn pub of 2712 Beaver Avenue, it's a liquor license. And D is O Sushi at 2815 Beaver Avenue, it's a beer and wine class C. Mr. Coleman.
I wanted to point out, I'm sure Bill will join me, in the, you know, finding things, making things better than you found them. Things are really good in Beverdale, and sometimes the paper and others have written stories about closing restaurants and, you know, things not doing well. These are two of four new restaurants in the Beverdale area, and I think that's really good news and, you know, a really good model. There's talk in Invest ESM about, you know, the commercial nodes and what relationship Invest ESM has there, but I think these kinds of things are really good for a neighborhood, and when it's good for a neighborhood, it's good for the whole city. And I just wanted to point out that good things are happening all over, and this is number three and four of restaurants opening in Beverdale that weren't there, you know, a couple of months ago. One last week, two this week, one a couple of months ago. So, Bill?
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Chris said. It's a great neighborhood, and a lot of these businesses have a lot of resilience. We did the Beverdale Streetscape about three years ago, and we're worried about putting all sorts of businesses out of business. And it just shows that there is a lot of loyalty, a lot of people that like to come to that Beverdale neighborhood. And so, I mean, when one place closes up, there's another place ready to go right in there. It's just an exciting neighborhood, and since I'm a Beverdalian myself, I'm going to welcome you all, come on down and have a good time down there.
One thing, I think it's a very walkable neighborhood, too, so I think that's one reason of the success.
He was moving it.
All right. Did you move?
Moved, yes.
7, yes.
All right, good comments. Takes us to 7. This is public improvements. This is ordering the construction of the following, and Mr. Coleman requested A, which is River Ben and King Urban Sewer Separation Phase 2B, receiving a bids 1119 of 19, and setting the date of hearing of 1216. The engineer's estimate is $3,750,000. I know that Mr. Coleman, I wanted to point out, probably at least B also with another stormwater project over $7 million, but Mr. Coleman, it's yours.
You actually hit the point that I wanted to make, Mayor. Items 7 through 10, and 7 has, I think, four different sub-items, 7 through 10, we're spending $18 million. And, you know, this is, you know, this is not some political campaign statement, these are real dollars that have been in the works for a while. They've been made possible through the local option sales tax and through a reprioritization of the funds here at council. Since March, we've pulled off items pretty routinely when we've had a big number. And Scott, I think it would be wise for us to go back and just add up how much money we've approved in contracts or spending on specific projects since the sales tax was passed in March.
Out in the neighborhoods.
In the neighborhoods, yeah. These are important flood protection, street improvement projects that are going to make a difference for our residents. And it's fun to vote on them, you know, here, but, you know, let's face it, our staff has been working on these for weeks and months to prepare them for this, and so we're really, really proud that we're ahead of the curve here. So, $18 million, we're spending a lot, and as I keep saying, promises made, promises kept, that's what we said in March, and that's what we're doing.
And Scott, I want to commend you. I drove on Hickman, I think it was 52nd Street, and we're doing a lot of work there, and there's a sign that I've always asked for, paid for by the local option sales tax.
Oh, that's good.
That's, yeah. Drive by and take a look. I mean, that's the thing that signals to the people out here, this is what we promised and we're delivering. That is a great sign. I hope to see it all over the entire city, so congratulations, Scott, great job.
I'll move 7A, I think is what we pulled off to make that point.
Chris?
I'm sorry.
Connie?
I guess I hit it wrong.
7, yes.
All right, takes us to item 23. These are boards and commissions and neighborhoods. 23 is recommendation from council member Coleman to reappoint Chad Layland to the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, seat 3, for a three-year term commencing April 1st, 2019, to expire April 1st, 2022. Council member Mantelbaum.
So, I wanted to raise this mainly to identify something that is a concern and maybe try and figure out a way to solve it. One of the things that concerns me with this particular board is we have, I think it's five or six of the board members, and this one being one of them, who don't live in the city of Des Moines. And we certainly have the ability to appoint folks who don't live in Des Moines, but I think some of what's happened is it's maybe inertia, or, and I will say, I'm sitting on an appointment that I've been sitting on for a while, where my appointee is on an expired term and is from Pleasant Hill, and I've struggled to find someone, but it's just someone who should be a general contractor residential. There's no reason that we can't find a general contractor that resides in Des Moines. And I'd like to solve that, so that the folks who are making decisions about our code and our appeals are people who live in our community. And maybe one of the things, and this maybe being cave, being new, this could be something that we could get some help from the city clerk's office in sort of pounding the pavement and finding people who might be qualified and live in Des Moines for some of these spots. I will defer to council member Coleman on this, if you want to have this go through, and part of what we can do is maybe try and find folks, particularly for some of the positions where we have someone who's from outside of Des Moines, and then go back and ask the people who are not part of Des Moines to step down so we can replace them with someone who lives in our community. But this has been one of those things that has just sort of been on my tick list for a while, and since I saw it coming up, I wanted to at least address it.
I get the long-term goal, and we probably have to address it, as I told him when we arrived at the council meeting. Chad's been on the board for me in two different stents, going back the first time, I think, since like 98. He served a couple of terms, then came back, and this is a renewal. I guess I didn't even know that he didn't live in Des Moines. You know, he's been serving, and I think he has impeccable attendance. He's been promoted a bunch of work. He's currently the president of Baker Electric, and, you know, they own and operate a bunch of property in Des Moines. I'd like to see it go through, but I would also say that it's really fair to, you know, have an exit strategy if we change the, you know, the rules long-term on how we phase people out that aren't from Des Moines, but, and I hadn't paid attention to the rest of the commission either, so.
On this one, I'm primary example, because I've been sitting on someone who's in Pleasant Hill, and I just haven't found a, haven't done my homework to find someone, so.
So, is it all right if we move 23 and, you know, refer to the city clerk and city manager, and maybe other council members, the issue of residency on some of these? I think it minimum, you know, capping the number of non-Des Moines people or something.
That might be, that might be a good solution to start with, anyway. But I think you're right, it's hard to find in some of these specializations, it's like, you know people are there, but how do you go out and recruit to get somebody who wants to be on and take the time that these people are willing to give up? So, either a marketing strategy to get people about, informed about what the boards and commissions are, because a lot of people don't even know they probably exist, so maybe we have to have a different strategy on how we're going out about it.
Yep. But I'm more than comfortable moving forward with it.
Okay. Move.
7, yes. Motion carried.
All right, that takes us to item 37. Item 37 is a submittal of $100,000 grant request to the Polk County Housing Trust Fund for the City of Des Moines Minor Home Repair Program. This is council communication number 19-474. Again, Mr. Coleman.
I want to compliment city staff and the council. By the time this grant comes and starts working, I'll be gone, so please let me just compliment you for making this effort. I think it's all of our goals that we have a stronger property maintenance code, that we have high expectations. The hurdle that we've never been able to get over before is having a program and funds to help people with some of the things that they need help with, who might be on fixed income or limited income. We don't want people to worry that we're going to take their housing from them because they can't afford to repaint their house or to, you know, fix the shutters. Between the sales tax and grants like this, we can do it. And this is probably going to be my last time to be able to talk about it, but this is a really good model and good evidence that we can do a property maintenance code and that we can improve our neighborhoods by making homeowners and landlords, people that are in the business of renting out houses, keep their properties up at a higher level. And that will pay off for all of us, and it will lead to, you know, a better satisfaction of people in their neighborhoods. It'll help us generate more money for basic services, you know, public safety, sewers and flood protection. So, I think it has to be a big priority. Scott and I talked about this just last week. It's been on my bucket list since I made one in July, and it's probably not going to get done by December, but this is a really, really good example of what we can do to help homeowners and individuals that need a helping hand stay in compliance with our codes. So, Joe wanted to talk about that.
I just, I just had a question. How are we promoting it? Because sometimes I know that some of these funds go unused. I just want to make sure that the, how are we getting the word out to the folks that need it? Because a lot of them probably aren't watching this, you know, it's not going to be on TV8 or 13, and it's a really good program, so I'm just wondering what...
Put it in the One Source?
Yeah, can we put it in the One Source? Can we put it in something where folks can...
We can actually raise the level of awareness.
I think we need to. I mean, I'd like to see all these funds gone immediately, you know, and get back into our neighborhoods and fixing things up and do what we need to do.
Yeah, and actually use this as a model for additional sales tax funds.
Yep.
Right.
So, yeah, I just, if you can come back to us and let us know how you're going to market this and promote it, I'd like to see that.
I know somebody that goes on, so I'll spell that out.
Yeah, I'm sure it does. You want to move it, or you want me to?
I'll move it. Thank you.
7, yes. Motion carried. Oh, sorry, didn't display. 7, yes.
All right, takes us to item 39. Item 39 is confidentiality and program agreement with the Des Moines Independent Community School District for a youth scholarship program for Parks and Recreation Department Recreation Programs. Council Communication number 19-484. This is council members Bozen and Gatto.
I just wanted to bring this out, because if people are watching, about the impact it'll have on students, and I appreciate Ben Page and the Park and Rec Department on what they're doing to help kids be part of different sports, swim lessons, the youth group. They're streamlining the process, part of their RAS program, and giving more scholarships to kids, and it'll be an easier process, and more kids will be able to take part. So, I just want to compliment his staff, how they've worked together with the school district, and other way that we have worked with the schools to strengthen how we impact the community. So, I know Councilman Gatto wanted to speak on it also, so I'll turn it over to him, but I just wanted to highlight and tell people this is opportunity, and they should check into it, if they have kids that want to be involved in the youth sports.
Absolutely, and I would echo a lot of her comments, but, you know, a lot of us have kids, a lot of us have coached, I still do a lot of coaching, and a way to involve kids and to get them involved is through youth sports. And, you know, the Des Moines Public Schools don't have a lot of feeder programs that some of our suburban schools have, and it, you know, and we see that as it gets to the high school level. This is a way that I think that we can even do more for the basketball, volleyball, flag football, soccer, and I would like to see us even do more. I think that we can offer this at $5 for everything. I wouldn't want to do it free, because I'd want them to be committed and have a little bit of skin in the game, but I think that I would like to make the suggestion and actually probably make the motion to have it, $5 for all of it. And I'm sure our city manager would be creative and be able to find the extra funding to make that happen.
Do we have any idea?
I don't think it's anything too substantial that we're talking about, and I know it's something that, you know, we are working with the Des Moines Public Schools, and this is something that we can do and really impact our youth in a positive way. You know, Ben's did a good job of organizing this and getting it put together, and I would just like to, I'd like to see this happen. I mean, I would take some discussion, but I'd like to be that as part of the motion to move it.
Joe, I think what you're recommending is absolutely fantastic, and I hope we do it. Two thoughts, first off, on the issue of funding. This is a great opportunity for philanthropy, too, and maybe through the Community Foundation or one of their donors, maybe Christie, the Community Foundation knows somebody that would want to backfill those dollars so that we can do it. It's a great way to make a difference. The other reason why I like this, Joe, and I'm going back like 10 or 12 years ago, but there was a period of time where the city raised the rates in all of our pools, made it pretty expensive to go to the pools. And you know what happened? We had almost the exact same amount of revenue that we did when it was cheaper, because fewer people went. I think we've proven your fear out before, and, you know, since then I've said, if we're going to lose money on a project, let's lose it with a whole bunch of people participating. You know, it's stupid to lose money on a project where very few people take advantage of it, and I think this is a way where we can spend a little bit of money and make a huge difference. And the way Ben Page and his team have built this program, it's a shining star, and unless you have kids that participate in it, a lot of people don't know the real difference that Ben and his team are making on this issue. I love your idea.
And as, I think somebody's going to probably move it, but I want to commend all of our council members for speaking up on this. Occasionally, it's alleged that the City of Des Moines and Des Moines Public Schools don't work together. I've got to tell you, our staffs and our city councils and school board members, we communicate all the time, and we've got lots of programs Ben could talk about that are happening through the Parks Department that support kids that do well in class, that get special breaks on summer swim passes, kids that want to actually work and become lifeguards, that they can get some training and do that through our Parks Department. We've got our NBSD officers that are out not only working in neighborhoods but working with kids, got summer programs going on for young people. We have done Evelyn Davis Park and Martin Luther King Park this summer. We've got programs where we're working together to maintain vehicles. Just released, I believe, Mr. Manager, that's just about to start a program where we're going to maintain all of their non-bus vehicles. I mean, we are working together, trying to find better ways that the city and the school district can work together. Let's get more dollars in the classroom. These are our future. We need to work together to make sure they happen, and thank you all of council members for bringing up some of these things tonight. But for all those that are listening, I want you to know, we're proud of the work that we do with the Des Moines Public Schools, and we're going to continue to keep working with them. And Connie works with them closely, knows a lot of them for a lot of obvious reasons. Scott and I have been to a couple of their meetings recently and actually asked to continue reaching out and let everybody know that we're going to continue to work together in as many ways as possible. So, thank you all for bringing this to light this evening.
No, what did, I saw calculations going on? Do we have, are we going to move that we're going to cover it, or are we going to move?
Five dollars per sport. Five dollars per sport.
Just wanted to see.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be my motion.
We'll make that part of the motion.
Yep. I'd make that part of the motion of item 39, and good work, Ben, and we'll move forward, and I think it's just a great way to have a positive impact on some youth.
Not everyone got to vote.
Oh, I had to hit display.
We got you.
Okay, there you go. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item 45. Item 45 is to receive and file a quarterly treasurer's report as of September 30, and I believe that 45 is council member Coleman.
I think I had my questions answered. Apologize for pulling it off. I'll move 45 if nobody else has a comment.
Okay, thank you.
7, yes. Motion carried.
All right, item 46B. This is purchase the following equipment. This is accepting the finance director's decision on appeal of a bid award to True Green, Nick May, general manager, for an annual contract with four additional one-year renewal options to furnish sidewalks, snow removal, services at various city properties for use by the Public Works Department, up to $250,000 annually, with price increases complying with agreement terms. There were 16 potential bidders, there were only two compliant bids received. Council member Gatto.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of comments, and I've had some discussion with Scott and with Jonathan and with Bob, the finance director. So, this came to my attention where we can all see the bids, and I seen the bid document, it's 44 pages, it's not in our packet, the bid document's 44 pages long. There's a, in the middle of it, under a small paragraph, it says to check the box if it's all or nothing. And that didn't get done for the Stone Cross, but after, they were only awarded two of them, because obviously some they were going to break even, some they were going to make a little bit, some they weren't, they decided to not do them. Now, True Green also didn't check the box, but they're actually going to get it all. It's going to cost our taxpayers $17,000 more, and that's fine, I mean, that's not the argument. I guess what I would like to see is we go out and we rebid this next year, because having this bid, the first meeting in November about snow removal, I mean, if we pulled it and said to go back and rebid it, I mean, we can have snow next week, so then all of our sidewalks...
our sidewalks wouldn't get done, and that would be kind of silly, but had some discussion with Scott, and we're hoping that, matter of fact, I would, I would make this, I think, part of the motion. I think Connie would maybe have a few comments on that, that this is a one-year bid, and it's not, it doesn't go to an additional renewal every single year with, with an increase.
It says additional one-year option.
Yeah.
I think the, one thing on any bidding process, too, having done purchasing, is that sometimes people just don't follow all the bid information, which is what you need when you want to make a fair bid. And I appreciate the reason why they asked to have it reviewed, and, but under the guidelines of what, if you want to hold to, to what you're purchasing projects and how you want to go procurement is done, you've got to hold true on it. If you have one-year option, it's a one-year option, correct?
Yes.
So, you can always go back out.
Perfect.
If you choose not to, so I think as long as it's the one-year renewal option that they should cover it, that you see what happens this year, and then you have that option to go back out.
So, and I, I would also like to see maybe the bid, the bid document simplified a little bit for, for folks that, you know, I mean, I'm sure we're using the same document that we use for a bridge, you know, or a street reconstruction or something. This is something that it's snow removal done by landscaping companies that are busy all the time in the summer, and they're trying to put together. We sent it to sixteen different people, and we got two back. Now, there's a reason for that, and part of it, it's really complicated to look at, and part of it is people are really busy. But you, I think that we need to have this out in July, and we should be voting on this in August, not, not November fourth. So, I, I think that would be part of my motion.
To move it up, too. I think it would be helpful.
Yeah.
No later than August, I would think, but just to move it up, too.
Right.
And I think the one thing, too, when you had sixteen potential ones, and what was the reason? Was it because of the bidding, or is it just because they have too much work and they don't need it?
Right.
And is the one-year option their option or our option?
It's both. So, we have the ability, if the council wants to give that direction, to let them know now that there won't be a renewal.
There won't be a renewal.
An automatic renewal.
Yeah, we would, we would put it up for a rebid instead of doing it now.
That's what I would vote.
I would, I would prefer that this is rebid next year by August first, and it comes back to us, probably the first meeting in September or, or August, right through there. Okay. So, the, I will move forty-six B with those, with those stipulations in there.
Item's moved. Any other discussion?
Should we go back? Vote again?
Yes.
You guys better quit taking so long.
Need to vote again.
Apparently. Hurry up. Coleman, vote.
Yeah.
I'm slow.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
All right. Our hearings generally start as close to five o'clock as possible. That completes the consent agenda. We're going to move now to the first hearing item, which is item fifty-eight. Item fifty-eight is on the proposed Fifth Amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan for the Ingersoll Grand Commercial Urban Renewal Area, Council Communication number nineteen dash four fifty-nine A is the first consideration of this ordinance above. I will go ahead and open the hearing and ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan on Ingersoll Grand. Anybody?
Seeing none. I'll move fifty-eight A, and then I'll move to waive the second and third readings.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item fifty-nine. These are items regarding the Urban Renewal Plan for the Thirty-eighth and Grand Urban Renewal Area, Thirty-seven Fifty Grand Avenue. A is to amend the existing plan DSM, creating our tomorrow planned future land use designation from high-density residential within a community node to neighborhood-mixed use within a community node. A is to receive and file the communication with the Planning and Zoning Commission. C is hearing on the adoption of the Urban Renewal Plan for the Thirty-eighth and Grand Urban Renewal Area, the Council Communication number nineteen dash four fifty-seven. D is a resolution of necessity, and E is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Let's go ahead and open the hearing and see if there's anyone to speak to the Urban Renewal Plan for Thirty-eighth and Grand Urban Renewal Area. Anyone in the audience? Anyone?
Anyone?
All right. Seeing none. I think that this will help facilitate some really great projects for our community. I'm going to move fifty-nine A, B, C, D, and E, and since no one is here, I'll move to waive the second and third readings of the ordinance as well.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item sixty. On the proposed Twenty-Fifth Amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan, Council Communication number nineteen dash four fifty-eight. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Item sixty.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item sixty.
Item sixty has been moved.
Six, yes. Motion carried.
Item sixty-one, which is on the conveyance of a permanent easement for airspace above city-owned property in Hubble Avenue to Anderson Erickson Dairy Company, Miriam Brown, president for two-thousand-and-two-hundred dollars. Anyone here to speak to this item? Again, this is airspace over city-owned property along Hubble. Seeing none?
I will move item sixty-one.
Sixty-one has been moved. Any conversation, discussion?
Six, yes. Motion carried.
Item sixty-two. On a conveyance of an excess city-owned property at one-oh-six Franklin Avenue to Pyramid Masonry, Inc., Miguel Guzman, president, sixty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, Council Communication number nineteen dash four sixty-one. Anyone here to speak to this item? One-oh-six Franklin Avenue.
I talked about this property last time. I will move it. It was such an impassioned plea, I could not bring myself to doing that, so I'm glad you took control there, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item sixty-three, which is on approval of documents for a land exchange purchase agreement with Jan Miller Straub Revocable Trust for property located on Sunset Road between Southwest Twenty-third Street and Southwest Twenty-eighth Street. Anyone here to speak to this item? Again.
Seeing none.
Property at Southwest Twenty-third Street to Southwest Twenty-eighth.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item sixty-three.
All right, item sixty-three has been moved.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item sixty-four. These are items regarding twenty-nine forty-four Des Moines Street. A is amend the existing plan DSM, creating our tomorrow planned future land use designation from low-density residential to community-mixed use. B is a hearing on the request from the Greater Des Moines Credit Union. Scott Zenley, officer, to rezone the property from R-one sixty, one-family low-density residential to limited C-two, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow the expansion of an existing branch financial services site with an addition of the existing building and additional off-street parking. C is the first consideration of the ordinance above. D is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Are there any? Yes, sir. We have a speaker.
We have a speaker. Rob Smith, CMBA Architects, three-nineteen Southwest Fifth, representing Greater Iowa Credit Union. This is their busiest branch of all their branches, and they are excited about expanding some to serve the east side, and they bought a piece of property to the west and are also going to buy the alley between this piece of property and the building and request approval, and second and third reading, whatever you say there.
Waiver the second and third.
I was just at your bank a few days ago, so I'm very familiar with it.
Good.
I, I, I think it's, it's, it's great for, for that area and that community, and, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problems with it, and I will move sixty-four A, B, C, and D.
And you want to waive the second and third?
That is waiving it. The D is.
Thank you.
Rob, thank you.
Thanks for coming, Rob.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item sixty-five. These are items regarding eighteen-twenty East Army Post Road. A is a hearing on a request to rezone the property from limited M-one light industrial to a new limited M-one light industrial whereby retail sales of consumer fireworks and warehousing are added as permitted uses. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial and requires six votes for approval. It was continued from the October fourteenth, two-thousand-and-nineteen council meeting. B is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anybody here to speak to this item tonight.
Hi.
Jeremiah.
Chair Hark back again. So, to revisit from last time I had come over, we were, the, the retail, or the area is currently zoned M-one limited, specific to fencing, and so the request before council is to leave it as an M-one but specific to the retail sales of fireworks. I did go ahead and bring over some renderings, if the council would like to see them for...
Yeah, just put them on that okay.
Yep.
I asked Jeremiah to bring some renderings of what the building and a commitment of a timeline of some sort of when we're going to, we're going to fix it up a little bit and bring it up to code, and I'll let him speak upon that.
So, the, this reflects a general conceptual rendering showing that we'd be adding green space, bringing the general building up to, working with city staff to bring the building up to codes, that it could be used for storage as well as retail sales. And then I believe in your, I believe in your packet, it shows the condition of the building now, so the overall footprint of the building wouldn't change, but it'd be, would be refaced and meet with city staff to get building plans approved so that we could actually occupy the building. My understanding of the building has been vacant for at least five years, so anyone who'd be purchasing the building would need to be doing significant work to bring the building up to code. The current property doesn't have access to city services such as sewer, so we already are understanding that we would have to replace the septic system. We know that we would have to replace the, or add a sprinkler system to the building. So, my understanding is that several people have worked to try to buy the building before and look into it. I do feel that we've done more due diligence than probably some of the other people previously have done, so we know a little bit what we're getting into there. I've held community meetings, I've gotten support from the Farm and, Farm and Supply Store from across the street, as well as been sharing the renderings along the way with, with Jim Ballard, the president of the Neighborhood Association. He expressed to me that the building as it stands today, the neighborhood would really like to see it either removed entirely or rehabbed, as I'm proposing to do.
And you'll have to do a, I know we've had some other people want to get into that building, and you'll have to do a significant firewall between that and the storage area.
Yes.
You're aware of that, correct?
Yep, so we're working with GTG Architects for the building plans, and then because of the consumer fireworks relation, we have a national NFPA firm out of Maryland that we're coordinating with for the appropriate fire rating that the building is going to be required to have, and then the outdoor, the green space requirements, we're working with Boss Outdoor on the landscaping for the, the city requirements for the green space that would be required, including sidewalks out front.
You talk about a little bit of a timeline of when, when you think you would start and completed with some of these things that we're talking about.
Yes, so we've got, we're preparing the architectural plans to submit to city staff to coordinate for approval there. We'd be looking to do the interior work over the winter. It's getting pretty close to the winter to do outside digging. I've been working through this process on the zoning. Zoning is really the first thing. We need to make sure that it's not going to be changing so that we can, we can move forward on the property itself. So, we'd be looking to do the interior work over the winter and the exterior work over the springtime so that it's ready for the July sales season next year.
Yeah, I think a lot of the concerns from P and C was that you're not going to do anything, you're just going to put a tent out in the parking lot. That's not what your intent is, correct?
We're proposing a mercantile use for the building, so it'd be a combination of sales and storage for leftover supplies.
Okay.
And will he hook up to city sewer, or do you have to put?
We don't, we don't have sewer there. That's, hopefully, as I looked at Scott, that's part of our CIP for that area. That's one of the reasons that that area hasn't grown significantly like we expected. They have water, but they have no sewer. We have a trunk line that's maybe a mile away that...
I think Fourteenth Street is what the city, the staff that I consulted with.
There's one that's further to the south, actually, and there's a major trunk line that was put in years ago to expand Easter Lake, but no one has, we haven't ran any type of sewer there, and that's why we haven't seen the rooftops in the area of Easter Lake than in the Army Post Road corridor, as you would probably expect any type of development. So, I'm hoping that in a few years of the CIP, that we'll be looking at some type of expansion of that, so, so we would be able to, we would be able to do that, and at that point in time, then he would be able to tap into the, you know, we have sewer.
So, is it septic now?
It is, they're all septic on that street. That's why it, yes.
Well, Lynn and I were on Board of Adjustment. I think it was, in this area, it was a shared sewer with another business, and that seemed awful odd, too, but it's all septic.
It's all septic up and down that, that area, where Transamerica is, and all, all of them are septic.
And we're understanding and in agreement that the septic codes of today, meaning that the building has been vacant for several years, we're understanding that the codes of today are probably different than the codes of yesteryear, so we understand that we're going to have to replace the septic, septic system, even though we understand it's not going to be a high-utilized restroom, it would be the primary usage for it, but we're understanding in agreement we're going to have to deal and replace with that, as well as the sprinkler systems, which the codes have changed over the years.
Okay.
I would just have a question as far as the sprinkler system, since this is fireworks being stored primarily.
Yes.
Is there a different kind of sprinkler system you have to install than what would be normal, and you're saying you're going to do firewalls?
I'm not the NFPA expert, but the firm we've been consulting with, and then we're also working with the local building officials, so there's, Consumer Fireworks has a specific section in the NFPA eleven-twenty-four requirements, so we would have to have fire-rated exterior walls, and then the sprinklers, the sprinkler system, which I believe the requirements for the sprinkler system would be comparable to any other building of that size. It's, it's a little over eleven thousand square feet, but it would have to be a new sprinkler system, and it would also have to pass NFPA eleven-twenty-four and get a sign-off from the city before we could even occupy the building.
And I would start those conversations sooner than later with, with Chief De Kip and his staff.
Correct.
Because I think, I think there is some other, I think there's a higher level of sprinkler needed for something like that, and...
Correct. The, the, some of it depends on, so for consumer fireworks specifically, the requirements are a little bit different. My understanding, again, I don't want to put myself as the expert, but we have the, the firm out of Maryland that's consulting on that, and then any plans would be submitted to the city and, of course, approved by the city for that.
Okay.
If there's no other con-
If there's no other comments, I'll move sixty-five A and B.
I just want to make a comment here as we are voting. I appreciate your application. This building that certainly needs some work. However, I am concerned about the use and, well, I don't, I'm not often in favor of referring things on over to the zoning Board of Adjustment. This looks like one of those particular instances when it may be appropriate, in my opinion. I just, I'm concerned about the use. I'm concerned about everything from the sewer to everything else and the level of fire protection that's required and all the work that has to be done here. And the fact that you got an absolute unanimous denial on the part of the Planning and Zoning Commission, having served honestly way too many years on that board. But I respect the work that they do, and I, so for that reason, I'm going to be voting no, but I wanted you to know that.
Appreciate the consideration, Mayor County.
Six yes, one no, motion carries.
Thank you. Do you want me to move the second and third reading? Do you want me to, can I make the second and third reading?
Now you would need to reconsider, make a motion to reconsider the item.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reconsider the item. And we'll just, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Pose. All right. And so the request here now is to, a motion to waive the second and third reading?
Yes, so he can start on getting some building permits and start construction.
Six yes, one no, motion carries.
Okay, that moves us on to item sixty-six. An request from Meyer LLC, David Silverstein, officer to rezone six fifty southeast thirtieth street from M1 light industrial to M2 heavy industrial to allow the extension of scrapyard under development on property to the north. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant, and it requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. It looks like we have a gentleman here speak.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Wally Pelz with Pelz Engineering Company, twenty-three twenty-three Dixon Street, Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three one six. This is just a small expansion of our project as we were going through and working with the city on that regional detention facility that's being built down there on southeast thirtieth and Scott. It was suggested that we, we were running out of space, and then to make sure that we had enough for our growth, we were able to convince the neighbor to the south to sell us an additional fifty feet, and we are asking to have that rezoned and considered tonight.
Any questions? Of Mr. Pelz? Seeing none, thank you.
I'll move sixty-six A and B. You guys got to vote.
Yeah, it shows up at the vote form, and then you have to re-vote.
You're good. You're welcome.
Seven zero, motion carried.
Item sixty-seven. Item sixty-seven is regarding thirty-one oh four University Avenue and eleven thirty-four thirty-first Street. A is to amend the existing plan to create our tomorrow plan, future land use designation from neighborhood mixed use and low-density residential to community mixed use. B is a hearing on the request from Come and Go L.C., Dan Grenou, officer, to rezone the property from C1 neighborhood retail commercial to R and R3 multifamily residential to CO, commercial residential to limited NPC, neighborhood pedestrian commercial to allow the redevelopment of an existing fuel station and eight-unit apartment building for a new five thousand six hundred and sixty-one square foot fueling station with retail sales of convenience items and with eight fueling location. C is a consideration, first consideration of the ordinance above, B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Item sixty-seven regarding thirty-one oh four University and eleven thirty-four thirty-first Street.
Good evening, Keith Wigan with CDA, also here tonight with Dan Garnow and Siobhan Harmon with Come and Go. We're excited to be here tonight, one of the first major steps along the way to see this site develop. Certainly be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Seeing anybody have any questions? We asked last time, I've got a question regarding that eight-unit apartment building. We were asking that hopefully you come back with some sort of a plan on how we either save it or move it or do something. It is a over a hundred-year-old apartment building that has some presence and recognition in the neighborhood. And what kind of thoughts and plans you had about reusing, relocating, reconfiguring, whatever it is that you have in mind there?
So I'm Siobhan Harmon with Come and Go. And outside of the council meeting last time, Neighborhood Development Corporation was asked to go ahead and look at the property and do an evaluation. Their evaluation was very similar to ours and within the same financial constraints. So the apartment building has eight units in it, and there's three floors that are fully above ground. The lower level is a, would be considered garden level. So the basement is half in the ground, half out, and there are two apartments down there. So we, you know, we looked at, and Neighborhood Development looked at, you know, when you move a building like that, the garden level, the beams would have to go through the garden level. So those two lower apartments would be substantially damaged or cut off when they cut the foundation off. So that would leave six units left in the building. It's just financially not feasible to move it with just six units. So if it was moved and then two units were built and added back with a foundation, that would give you, you know, eight units, which, I mean, again, it still financially doesn't punch out, and I can go through the numbers on it, but, you know, it looks a little bit better. So in order to, in order to relocate the building, it's seven hundred thousand plus dollars just for the mover to move it. And this does not include the land purchase of where the building would go, the new basement, engineering cost, demolition of the site that would be purchased to move the building to. You know, you'd need utilities, and then there's all the paperwork things like an appraisal and financing and all those other things that happen. The other thing is that, you know, in order to move it, you have to take down utility lines, trees would need to either be removed or trimmed back, and then, of course, we'd need to deal with electrical lines. So that, so then if you can move it within a block, you know, it takes about a hundred thousand out of moving the building, but all those other costs remain the same. So NDC was able to identify three sites that were in a one-block radius. One of the sites, two of the sites are not for sale. One of the sites is a house that we have tried to buy in the past and have been unsuccessful in doing so. You know, that gentleman might consider, you know, selling. Our last negotiation with him is he would not sell at four hundred thousand. So again, there's been no discussion with him or negotiation with him, so I'm not sure what, you know, if he would sell. But, you know, I think with three possible lots, that probably one of those could work out. So that actually, that's a good thing, because it would actually cut the cost of moving the building to somewhere between five hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty thousand. But the price tag all in to move this building is about one point seven million. It has, you know, we purchased it for nine hundred thousand based on the cash flow of the building as an investment. You know, the prior owner, you know, it wasn't cash flowing. I mean, it was holding its own, but it wasn't cash flowing as an investment. So, you know, basically, you've got a gap of about six hundred and thirty thousand on this to move it. You know, we've, Come and Go has agreed to go ahead and pitch in a hundred thousand. And that's just based on, you know, if we were going to demo the building all in, you know, we, you know, we're a sustainable company, so we, you know, recycle and repurpose, you know, what we demo. So, you know, I mean, this is rough estimate, but we're guessing it's about a hundred thousand dollars or so net on the deal. But, you know, at that point, there's still a gap of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I mean, really, the only way to do this is through city incentives or TIF or, you know, some type of, some type of package to move it. So that's kind of the update, you know, from NDC and, you know, from us. Again, our, our research on this was very similar.
Who provided the seven hundred thousand dollar estimate?
So we used a company out of Minneapolis, and I can't remember, do you remember who it is? And then NDC hired someone else also to look at it that was actually in town on Saturday doing an evaluation of the building.
And was their price about the same?
Yeah. In fact, the pricing that I gave you was similar, but these are the prices that NDC came up with.
The Dan Garnow Site Development Manager with Come and Go. We spoke to three companies, and only one could actually complete the work as requested. And their price came in at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus. So depending on where the building was going to be relocated to, we had a report out that has those specific companies in the report, but it was pretty much spot on with the other data that was gathered.
Have you considered realigning your site with some sort of a recognition of that building and leaving it there? And then reconfiguring what your place looks like so that it sort of recognizes the historic value of that place? And, I mean, you'd get a lot of plus points from the neighborhood and everybody else if you could figure out how to do that. Now, I remember a few years ago, we actually watched them move a, an apartment building slightly smaller than this, the Murillo.
We reached out to the owner of that building and the company that moved that building.
Mm-hmm.
And they are no longer moving buildings.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
So that's why I suggest, did you look at leaving it there?
We did. We basically, we'd be keeping the same-sized building then and the same number of pumps. So even though now we're doing a significant decrease from what we traditionally do, already with the cost of the building and the site and everything that we've got up to this point with the apartment building, it'll be a challenging site financially, as is. And then if we cut the size of the building by more than a half and decrease the number of fueling positions by a half, I just don't think that it would be viable.
I just was looking, the size of your building, it's fifty-six hundred square feet, not an overly large building?
No, no, but the current building is about, if I remember, about twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet. And it would have to be about the same size to fit in the same, the same site that we have today.
And just without, so, you know, just without the apartment building, like moving the apartment building, this is the most expensive site that we've done in the state of Iowa. You know, we're adding about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the building in architectural enhancements for glass and, you know, pedestrian-friendly. You know, because again, just so, I mean, obviously with the new code, but, you know, we want the building, obviously, to interact with the neighborhood, because it's going to be a big walk-up store with, you know, Drake traffic.
And so how many fueling stations are you going to have there?
So we have four MPDs, or, you know, fueling pumps. And that is, translates into eight fueling positions, because each pump is two-sided.
Okay, and how many do you have now?
We have two pumps, four fueling positions.
So you're going to double?
We're going to double.
Okay.
And the minimum that we do on building sites is six. So we're, you know, smaller than what our typical store is.
It looks like on here, the neighborhood, the neighborhood has supported it?
Yeah.
So is Drake.
I mean, I think it's a good redevelopment. I want to ultimately see it go forward. I mean, I think it will be a significant enhancement to the university corridor, and it will be good for the neighborhood. What I'm trying to figure out, and for the most part, the information that you presented was similar to what I had a conversation with NDC earlier today. Their gap was a little bit smaller. I mean, I think they're representing, it's potentially in that same range, assuming that that owner of the house next door sells for four hundred some thousand. That would probably be, I think, about a six hundred thousand dollar gap.
Yes, so her number is six thirty. And, I mean, you're right, you know, if they could get the land for something under four hundred, you know, it would save.
And my sense from talking with NDC is they, they think that there is a possibility to either working with the city, historic preservation, tax credits, some other creative mechanism, but they think there's potential to close that gap and figure out a way to potentially make this work. I want to, I want them to have that opportunity. I guess the question I have is in terms of timing. I mean, when, when do you think you need to demolish the building or figure out if they've got the alternative sort of hammered out?
So, you know, we absolutely have no issue with, with, you know, NDC, you know, continuing to evaluate this and see whether, you know, it's a project they would want to take on. You know, we pretty well need to be under construction or start demo, you know, ideally end of March, April, somewhere in that timeframe in order to, you know, be open.
So when would you have to make, so when would you have to make the call, or when would they have to be sort of set up?
When is, like, in that schedule of starting construction in late March, do you need the building cleared by then? Or is that the time, March is when the building will come down?
Well, that's when we'd need the building cleared, and we'd start, you know, getting ready for construction. So the tenants that are in there are all month-to-month tenants at this point, and they're aware that the project's happening. So we've been, you know, we want to make sure they have plenty of time to move and can get organized for that.
I think Josh, if I hear you right, trying to create a win-win where, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but maybe there could be an approval process started so long as NDC would have time to study it longer.
That, that's exactly what I'm trying to do.
What's the demo cost for that building? What do you, what do you guys?
Well, we haven't gone out to bid yet, but we've put budgets together. And again, like when we put, you know, when we demo a project, there's also salvage on it, on top of it.
Part of the bids that we get in on the demo is the contractor's ability to make money from the resale of those items. I just wanted to add, too, that what our proposal is to the city is that we would make an effort to salvage those aspects of the building that are original and historic. So where we can do that, use them somewhere else, donate them to Drake or to another establishment, it would add a little bit of time to our demolition schedule and a little bit of cost. But, you know, we think it's important enough, too, that for a building that is as old as this building is, that if, you know, there are those items that are identified as still being original, that we would make that effort as well.
So are we looking at putting additional city funds in to move this building? I'm just confused on what we're being asked to do.
Nothing right now. NDC might come back and say, is there a way that this, like a TIF district might apply to moving this so that the property taxes are?
Is this in a urban?
I don't think it is right now.
Is it in a TIF district?
I don't believe it is.
So we'd have to figure something out. And there's, I think, one property where depending, can avoid some of the costs that are built in, maybe a couple hundred thousand of the costs, so the gap would be lower.
But are you asking?
I'm not asking that. I'm asking, so I don't know if we can put a condition to move the zoning forward, subject to working with NDC over the coming months, and that NDC will give us sort of a sign off that they've, if they either figure out a, figure out a solution? out a solution, or they'll come back.
Just as a thought, we're here for the rezone today, but as we go through the city approval process, that does include a historic review. And so, I think there are other waypoints along the way that, that the city will be able to have that interaction.
And, you know, and of course...
Demolition permits don't come to us, do they?
We can direct the manager.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, right, not through the council, but it's city.
But, so, for instance...
I think Joe's question is a valid one. Can I ask it a different way?
Okay, thank you.
If we told NDC there's no city money in it...
Yeah.
Would they keep pursuing it? And then the next question would be, if we told them there was 100 grand in it, would they keep pursuing it? I mean, at some point, at some point, we, we've got to have a little gut check and say, okay, what might the council be willing to put into it to save it? Is that a couple hundred thousand dollars?
That's a good way of asking my question.
Because NDC is just, if NDC is going to drop other projects in the city that we all care about to concentrate on this...
Well, and, and let's...
Maybe they think, maybe they think we're asking it because we're going to pay the difference in what's market.
I want to exhaust all opportunities. So, if there's historic tax credits, if there's other stuff that's out there, because I remember on the Murillo, there was those, there was a number of different state and maybe even sometimes federal paths to try to go down. And because of the age of this thing and, and its presence up there in the neighborhood, I, I think that, I mean, I'm not against, you know, moving something along, but I would certainly feel better if we could exhaust all of our opportunities to try to do the right thing here and save it. How large are those units in that, that building?
The total building is 9,504 square feet, so each floor is roughly 2,400 square feet, two apartments per floor.
So, you take the hallways out and all that stuff?
Yeah, it's got a big hallway and staircase.
It's a thousand square foot or better.
And the entire interior of the building has, has been redone in 2006 to make it, the entire interior's been remodeled. So, nothing is originally interior except for one staircase. And...
Even the, even the original windows aren't in the location that they were, you know, they've been upgraded and retrofitted.
The decks are all...
So, they're either smaller or larger or something.
Yeah.
There's actually not much left of the building that's original.
Some of the bathrooms on, like, some of the tile floor in some of the bathrooms, but we think part of the staircase in the middle of the building, that there's certain sections of that. But, you know, even the foundation has been, has had repairs and replacements.
The roof is not original, it's new. We did an archaeological survey on the entire building, and it identified what's original and what's not.
So, how big are the units? They're 1,000 square feet or 1,100 square feet?
That range, yes.
Well, yeah, probably 900 to 1,000 max.
Okay.
Because it's got a, like, when you go in, it's got a staircase that goes up through the whole thing, you know, it's not ADA accessible. And so, it's got a large staircase through the middle of the building.
Yep.
Are they full? Is every unit full right now?
Yeah, I think we are full. When we bought it, it was not full. But, you know, we put, we've got, you know, Frank Levy with Newberry Management managing and leasing it for us.
So, are we going to make sure that everyone's relocated before anything would happen?
So, we've been in contact with the tenants for over a year now, keeping them up to date on, you know, what's happening and...
Okay. Are, did you share the information about the re-renovation inside and the changing of windows?
Yes, sir.
Like to suggest that historic preservation dollars are probably not?
We did look into it as part of the process, and we didn't identify any, any historic funds that were available, TIF funds that were available. We've been looking at it since about this time in 2017.
Okay.
But we did, we did do a pretty exhaustive amount of research on the building.
There're not vinyl windows in there, are there?
No, they're, they're not vinyl, but they're, they're modern as of 2006.
Josh, I, I kind of like your idea of making sure that there's a window to keep working on it, but to pass it tonight and move forward. So, it's in their interest and our interest to, to double down and see if it's possible. And the one, the one thing I would say is, and I'm, I'm looking at you, Mayor, because you were involved in the siding as P&amp;Z chair, I think of that Walgreens on the other side of the street. The best place in Des Moines for it to go would be right on that corner, on the Walgreens parking lot.
There you go.
Gray could move it over there. I mean, it's right across the street.
But more importantly, if we put a motion out, I'd like to at least run it through legal to see what he thinks we'd need to do to make sure we keep everything...
Yeah, and we're very supportive of keeping the NDC process, you know, moving. Yeah, we're, we're great with that.
Don't we need a timeframe on that NDC process?
If council wants to do this as part of the zoning, you, you'd need to continue the hearing and try to, we would need to work the manager's office, try to come up with some kind of zoning, rezoning conditions, because you don't have that now. So, and if you, if you close the hearing, they, they, that opportunity's lost. So, if you want to do it as part of the rezone...
We haven't closed the hearing?
You have not closed the hearing, no, sir. But I just want to make sure council understands that to continue the hearing, give us an opportunity to come up with something.
But that, but we could act, if we accepted the good word of these three and Come and Go, that they were going to give us that opportunity, and it wasn't, the zoning wasn't contingent or a condition of the zoning, but a promised work in good faith. And we'd still have a little bit of the hammer separate from the zoning on the demolition permit.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I'm just saying if you...
Don't, don't tie it together.
Councilmember Malam had asked about the rezoning condition, so if you're going to do that, they, it would have to be continued.
But if we went down your route, Mr. Coleman, it sounds like probably not. So, I didn't, let's put, I want all the cards on the table.
Well, I just wondered, I mean, are we committed to doing a dollar amount to NDC to, to do this? I mean, are, because...
I haven't heard all the, what channels they've expired and say, you know, that won't work, this won't work. I'd like somebody to, you know, some of the people we used to have, Andrea and Mary Dinerback and all those, used to be able to step right up and, boom, we had it. But now, I think we need to do a little further research.
Sounds good.
But that doesn't mean we can't, through the, some fashion, begin to move this forward. If that's what everybody wants.
So, if we did the first reading tonight, could we come back with?
No, the statute is clear, it has to be before the hearing has been closed, if you're going to have the rezoning condition. You'd have to restart the process, correct?
Do you, I mean, I don't even know what type of condition that we would put on the zoning. I mean, essentially, I think it comes down to, we're just asking them to, in good faith, continue working on this with NDC and exploring other options.
Because the question is, if NDC comes to the end of the day, and they say, it's just not feasible either, and we say, we don't have any money, are we, we still want this rezoned?
We still want it rezoned.
So, they do, so my thing would be, we do the rezoning tonight, and then in good faith, say, let's continue, because people have already done a ton of work on it, it sounds like, a lot of research.
Yep.
And let's just do one more pass-through and see if there's any salvage of the building.
I mean, I think Come and Go needs to get going with their building. They need to, they need to get some...
I think I can offer that on behalf of Come and Go, we would, we would absolutely continue working with the city and council in good faith.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I think we have, and we've, we've changed the entire configuration of our, of our site, our building size, our number of pumps, where we've located the building on the site. It's, it's a location that's important to us as a company, and we think it's a, it's a great site for, for Drake and the neighborhood, and, and we would absolutely continue to maintain that relationship we've had.
Okay.
All right.
So, what's the motion sound?
So, I will...
Move it.
Move 67 A, B, C, and D.
But not D? Do you want to move D, or you, okay, okay.
Might as well just be... Yeah, and we're gonna, with the, with the addition that the parties will work in good faith to continue exploring the possibility for a move.
Yes. And is Come and Go or a wholly-owned company under Come and Go, the owner of the apartment?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, they can turn around and, yeah, that's fine. I mean, if, if it doesn't, if it, if it doesn't work out, I mean, you can turn around and tear it down yourself and be done with it.
Yes, anyway.
Right.
They, they always have that ability.
Yeah.
I appreciate the work that they've been doing.
I mean, to try to preserve it.
Thank you for agreeing to keep looking at options and alternatives.
We will, thank you.
It's helpful, thank you.
Seven, yes.
Portable housing is an important issue.
Absolutely. Those are nice units.
All right, takes us to item 68. Item 68 is dismissing a hearing on a request from Lucky Gal One, Inc. Chris Prusner is the officer to rezon 3104 Southwest 9th Street from C1 Neighborhood Retail Commercial to C2 General Retail and Highway Oriented Commercial to allow a reuse of a portion of the existing building for a game room or indoor recreation use. The Plan and Zoning Commission recommends denial of the rezoning, and the motion here again is dismissing the hearing. Anyone here to speak to this item?
So, I'll move this item. I think they're going to come back with a proposal with conditions that hopefully satisfy the neighborhood concerns once the new zoning code takes effect. So, I suspect we'll, we'll see this in the future.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
All right, item 69 is dismissing a hearing on a request from Fred and Jerry Robinett title holders to rezon 2833 East Acorn Street from A1 Agricultural to limited R181 Family Residential to allow subdivision and redevelopment, or end development of the property for an additional single-family dwelling acreage. Again, this is dismissing that hearing. Anyone here to speak to this?
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 69.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item 70. Item 70 is on the proposed 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, which includes the 2020 Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Consolidated Plan, Council Communication Number 19-476. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to all things HUD? Uh-huh.
I mean, having to speak, Lisa Krabs of Community Development, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but this is a pretty standard, standard document that we do every five years, so.
I'll move item 70. Thank you for your work on that, Lisa.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
All right, next item is 71. This one is dismissing a hearing on the application from Phyllis Woods Trust for the relief from temporary moratorium to apply for rezoning of property at 6015 Grand Avenue. Anyone here to speak to this item?
Seeing none, I'll move item 71.
Item 71 has been moved.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
All right, that brings us to the conclusion of the hearings. At 5:53, takes us back to item 52. Item 52 is an ordinance for consideration, meaning Chapter 102 of the Municipal Code relating to street use permits, Council Communication Number 19-455. Is there anyone here to speak to this item?
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move item 52.
All right, item 52 is moved.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item 53, meaning Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code relating to rates for the city parking garages, Council Communication Number 19-469. This is parking garages rates. Anybody here?
I'll move this.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item 54, meaning Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows, Council Communication Number 19-471. A is a code modification to match existing conditions between East 8th Street and East 10th Street on East Madison Avenue and Hoffman Avenue. B is a code modification related to the Southwoods Estates, Platte 1 and 2 Developments. C is parking restrictions, 43rd Street, California Drive, and Crocker Street. D, parking restrictions, 63rd Street, north of Dawson Drive. E is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waivers requested by Councilmember Coleman and requires six votes. All right. Anybody here to speak to either item, or any of the items on 54 A, B, C, D, and...
I'll move 54 A, B, C, D, and E, since no one seems to be here to speak.
All right.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
Item 55 is approving a consideration of a request from 3750 Grand LLC, Harry Bookie, owner, to demolish a portion of the First Church of Christ Scientist Building located at 3750 Grand Avenue pursuant to Section 58-70 of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Choose alternative A or B, Council Communication Number 19-473. A, the application for demolition of the building shall be referred to the Landmark Review Board, or B, the application for demolition of the building shall not be referred to the Landmark Review Board. Let's see if there's anybody in the audience who wants to make a comment on this item.
So, seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move 55B. There's been a very robust process around this property already, including meeting with the neighborhood associations, going through Urban Design Review Board. This is getting significant attention, and I think that provides more than enough protection in this case. And that building, the project is doing, I think, a very nice job of preserving what is able to be preserved. The main portion of the sanctuary is in pretty rough condition. If this project doesn't go forward, it's going to sit vacant and...
Deteriorate.
Someone else will be coming and asking to tear it down in the future. So, this is, I think, as good as we can do, and the building and the architecture and design really respects the history of the site. So, with that, I'll move 55.
Kay, this is a related question. Is there a way you could, or somebody could get us a list of who's on the Landmark Review Board? I looked that up over the... Do those boards appoint them, or do we? I guess I'd just be interested in what that makeup is, and there's, you don't need to answer it now, I just...
We'll send you an answer.
Yeah. It's time to stand.
It was, it was seven zero. Motion carried.
Beautiful.
Takes us to item 56. Item 56 is marked District of the East Village Master Plan is an element of Plan DSM Creating Our Tomorrow Plan, Council Communication Number 19-481. Anybody in the audience want to speak to the East Village Master Plan? Seeing none, I've got to tell you, this is some major stuff going on down there.
Yes. You know, I had the opportunity a couple weeks ago to go out to Denver with Matt and Aaron and visit Commons Park, where they have something very similar, the same design team is helping Mid-Am and, and some of the developers down there do kind of that same, same idea, same concept, not as, not as big, but, you know, Commons Park's right along Platte Lake and, or River, and they have water trails down through there. And it was amazing for me to see the development...
and they have water trails down through there, and it was amazing for me to see the development there, and the amount of rent that they're getting there really was amazing. So we traveled all throughout Denver, and I would kind of say, not the very best part of the city, parts that are getting redeveloped, not this particular area, but they've taken us to other parts. And Matt and I asked what the rent was at this one particular park, and it was equivalent to what they're getting at 801 grand. So, because, you know, I wondered, you know, did they use TIF, what type of economic incentive did they do for, for the development that they got? And it's all mixed use. It's, you know, commercial on the bottom, residential on the top, lots of different ones, real tall buildings, office buildings down there, lots of different levels of different things, very similar to what we have here. And, you know, if we can pull that off in the next 10 years with this plan, it would be an amazing concept. But it's, it's amazing the rent that they get. I mean, it's basically double of what we get here at one of our most expensive buildings, so.
Maybe we should talk to those people about coming to Des Moines.
Well, yeah, and they have, they have a business that is mostly cash business there. People probably like to get it into real estate and it doesn't become cash at that point, so. I think a lot of that, I think a lot of that's happened in that city.
Gummy bears you're talking about.
Something like that, but we've got this nice.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I will move item 56.
Seven, yes. Motion ca, whoops, motion carried.
Item 57 is the appointment of Malcolm A. Hankins as the Assistant City Manager. Mr. Manager?
Well, as you might imagine, I'm excited to get Malcolm here. He's moving this week and will be at work Tuesday morning. I think he might also be able to join us for.
Would that be tomorrow?
Of next week.
Okay.
I'm sorry, on the 12th, on the 12th, so, yes. And so we'll have an opportunity to introduce you to him at the next council meeting, if not sooner.
All right, congratulations to him and look forward to introducing him to everybody upon his arrival at his first meeting here. All right, could we?
I'll move item 57.
All right.
Seven, yes. Motion carried.
We have one extra item on this evening. These are items that are filed after 5:00 PM the Wednesday preceding the council meeting. In this particular case, this is a discussion regarding Bloomberg Philanthropies Asphalt Art Initiative Grants, sponsors are council members Mantlebaum and Gatto. Gentlemen, who's going to take it up?
We'll let Josh. So this item, I had someone email me about the Bloomberg program. And I think last week Bloomberg announced an initiative for street art, which is essentially painted crosswalks, painted, painted street areas to encourage it. It's a short-term window, it's December, I think grant applications are due December 12th. It's targeted at mid-sized cities like Des Moines, so you have to be a city between 30,000 and 500,000, and it provides $25,000 for, for projects. At the same time, Friends of Southwest 9th in their master plan, they have an art node that is part of their master plan, and that's at McKinley and Southwest 9th. And they're actually meeting with staff tomorrow, as it so happens, to discuss plans for that specific node. And so the timing of the two seemed to make a lot of sense that I'd like to encourage or actually direct staff to work with Friends of Southwest 9th to get an application submitted for this grant program that is due in December. And the grant is set up that the applicant has to be the city, and then the fiscal agent has to be a nonprofit. We've got both of them, and we've got plans already in the works, so we, I think, are really well positioned for something like this. I will note the one thing that, on these things, that is, we've had success with it. We've got the art walk that is, that is on crosswalks all throughout downtown. There is a little bit of, I guess it gives our engineers some heartburn because non-traditional crosswalks and painting like that is a little out of the norm. But I think there's a real effort to move to have that be, be something that is used creatively by cities, and I think this is a good place for us to do that. So I'd like to see us do that. So that would be my motion, is to, to have staff work with Friends of Southwest 9th on an application for this.
And if I could just add to that, I fully support it, but I know in neighborhoods in Ward II, we have been asking to be allowed to have some painted crosswalks and some do them things, and we've repeatedly been told no. And that was under my impression that we were going to bring that before council, and we were going to have a discussion about that before the end of the year. Is that still on the agenda?
That is, as a work session, and not to get into it here, but yeah, we do need to have that conversation because there's, there's legal and liability aspects to this conversation that we'll, we'll want to get through as well. Well, one of the two biggest cheerleaders of the Southwest 9th revitalization and the Friends of Southwest 9th, Phil Barber and Bill Hanson, you know, when they get their mind set on something, and Phil, a half a block away, has put together a pocket park, basically, with a lot of art in it. If any of you haven't visited it, I would suggest it's, it's pretty awesome. It's on the, it's on the corner of McKinley and Southwest 8th there. You know, this, this is something that, five years ago, when we went through this, you know, this was one of the things that was, we'd really like to get done. I understand that, you know, there, there might be some other parts in the city, and, you know, I just, we probably need to have that conversation, but there's such a small window that we can use for this grant that, you know, I would, I would like to see this move forward also, along with Josh. Him and I share, Southwest 9th is our ward boundary. And so, I mean, I, I would also love to have this get done because it's just another thing that we can cross off, that we're trying to work towards revitalizing the street and, in that, in that corridor.
And, and I wasn't indicating that I.
No, no, I know.
I do. I think it will help the rest of the city be able to get some additional crosswalks, some things that we need.
But it, one thing that will, you know, if we don't get this grant, people would be upset that Southwest 9th hasn't been repaved before we do this. But if we're using grant money to, to do this, I, I think they'll be a, a little happier with that than us using their dollars without fixing the street. Just, just to be on the record for everyone, that we're not using tax dollars, it will be a grant.
Looking for opportunities.
Looking for opportunities.
So the item's been moved. I want to say that, thank you guys for catching that. We have worked with Bloomberg in the past, and they have been nice to the city of Des Moines, and this is a great program, and hopefully it will boost opportunities and, and give ideas to the rest of the city and lift up some of the other neighborhood areas that are looking for it, as Linda pointed out. Because I know there's some areas that this is really kind of fun and attractive. I hope that we can work up the detail of any legal or other issues around it, so, thank you all.
I will have the vote with seven to zero. Motion carried.
Perfect.
All right, unless anybody wants to stay here for a whole bunch more time?
I do have one announcement.
Oh, please.
Tomorrow is an important day. I'm looking at the camera, wherever it is. It is, it's the day that we don't celebrate politicians, but citizens, because citizens get to go vote tomorrow. So go out and vote. Your city and your school district need you to vote.
That's right. And for all of you, thank you for coming this evening. Hope you enjoyed it. And until next time, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you for attending.
Well done. Kay, well done.
Yes, and this is our, our new, Kay's first meeting, and you did a nice job. You got us through it.
Thanks.